It is Monday, May first, two thousand seventeen, May Day. And it is six thirty two, six thirty four, we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Uh, we're gonna start with the approval of our minutes from April third. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April third.
Thank you. Uh, any corrections, edits, questions?
I didn't read them.
Okay.
I, 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 how did I miss that?
Well, May is way down.
That's why.
Yeah, cuz we've been used to April, it's been right at the top.
I thought I scrolled down all the way.
You know, you can sort it by, if you sort it by date modified, the newest folder will come to the top. Would you like a little lesson in that later? Just kidding, thank you.
Is there, th- there was a second? Was there a second?
I was absent, so I'm not gonna.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Now, any, uh, questions, suggestions, edits, comments? Like, one quick comment is in the Chartwell section.
Yes.
Um, I think, you know, we're mentioning the good news, but just for the record, uh, what was mentioned at that meeting, as far as I recall, is that the deficit was under ten thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
So that it would be, you know, if nobody can go back and find any documents, at least they can take a look at our minutes and see what the reference point is.
Okay. Hmm.
Good suggestion, I'm right.
Is the Chartwells year-to-date in the folder, Kathy? That?
Yes, it is. It'll, it'll be in, in the, uh.
So we can attach that as minutes as well?
That would be great, yep.
Okay.
Was the, was the kitchen closed in April? It's not closed already these middle, is it?
Yes, we're shipping food.
I thought it was May. Oh, already, okay, I thought it was May. Says April, so they know.
Yeah, I think the last week of April they started, and that had been a request from the construction to build the wall, so to speak.
Any, just, since we're on the minutes, the, the parent that, that came that night from visitor's comments was, anything ever happen with all that? Were they, weren't they talking about trying to get a meeting together?
Eighth graders?
Of what's going on in the high school to help? Remember?
I am drawing a blank.
Well, the lady who came in and just talked to us, and then, you know, there was a conversation about,
Yes.
Because we went to the open house to talk to sixth graders, uh, we were thinking about talking to eighth graders as well.
Mm-hmm, sorry, yes. So there is, actually, my update, the transition meeting from six to seven is May eleventh. Um, so we'll be there talking, uh, meeting the sixth and seventh graders. Um, but we have been following, um, any concerned, uh, students that may be considering, uh, a different placement, whether it's school choice or private school, through the scheduling process, and we have not been made aware, um, and that means that students have given their course selections and, um, have selected courses for the next year, and that's typically where we catch, um, and communicate with families who may be, uh, making a decision.
Okay. Alright, maybe we can revisit that under the, uh, strategy part, cuz let's just, uh, be done with our minutes.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, we're gonna approve the minutes as amended? Is that, is that where this, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so is there, uh, well, all in favor to approve the minutes, uh, as amended, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Visitors' comments. No, she always looks around just so that we don't make eye contact. Alright, um, so we're gonna move on to our student rep. Here.
Thanks. Um, so Standing Room Only is performance of Siren of the Burger Shack was April sixth through ninth, and everyone both involved in the show, and those who came to see the show enjoyed it a lot.
What is, uh, standing, standing room?
It's, um, the Granby Drama Club. The high s- well, like the high school, the middle school, and East Meadow, all together.
Granby Drama Club, okay.
Um, class officer and student council elections were held mid-April. I don't quite remember the date, but it was around, it was before break, I believe. Um, student council elected its newest RSEC delegates and alternates at its last meeting. Um, and the RSEC orientation meeting was April twenty eighth.
RSEC being?
Regional Student Advisory Council.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then, RSEC and SSEC, which is the State Student Advisory Council, um, leadership positions, um, well, leadership was elected and topics and ideas for next year's projects, uh, were discussed. Nothing is finalized yet, um, but it will be in our, uh, next meeting, it's coming up. Um, and when students first arrived at the meeting, they were asked to write, honestly, you know, what they thought, what is the most pressing issue that's affecting their school system at the moment? Um, the majority of students said that, uh, not enough funding and cuts to their staff, classes, and other programs, um, as well as their mental health being negatively impacted by stress from teachers, school in general, um, and the workload that they were receiving, receiving both in and out of school, like lots of classwork and homework, um, were two of the most pressing, pressing issues that were affecting them and their, their classmates, their student body. Um, so we are definitely going to look at funding, sort of, but I mean, there's, I mean, there's only so much we can do as, like ma- making suggestions, um, but that, we're definitely, the topics that we discussed, like food, lunch, and, um, like the food programs, uh, and some of those, I guess, are impacted by funding and like state sub, like, state subst- subsid-?
Subsidies.
Thank you, yeah. And so, it's not necessarily in, like, our.
Control?
Yes, thank you, I can't think of words, but, um, uh, the, we're, we're definitely like discussing like what we can do to help out most, as many like school systems as we can, um, to help positively.
Is it the regional level, or is it the state?
This is the regional level.
Okay.
Um, and then once we get to the state meeting, on May eighteenth, um, we're going to have our elections, uh, not this meeting, but the next one. This next meeting is just to wrap up, um, all the projects from this year, this is our last meeting to wrap this up. Um, everyone's, and all the groups are in pretty good shape to accomplish the goals that they had set. Um, and then the next meeting after that is when all the new, uh, newly-elected, um, RSEC members and the, and the SSEC delegates, uh, will go, there's two S- RSEC chairs and then a communications coordinator, and then there's, uh, eight delegates, and then all of those people go to Malden for the State Advisory Council. And, um, at that orientation meeting, we'll be electing our chair for SSEC, our communications coordinator, and our vice chair. Um, the chair is going to sit on the Board of Education. Um, and then, the rest of that meeting will be spent discussing, um, topics that we can, uh, work on, and like projects we can work on for next year. Um, so nothing is finalized yet for, um, RSEC, uh, projects, and nothing will be finalized yet for, um, SSEC projects. But there's a, like a leadership conference sort of thing over the summer to finalize those for SSEC, and then that will be brought down to the regional level, and then, like, using those ideas and stuff for those projects, and then our own ideas of what we think is a really pressing issue for our community, like Western Mass, like region. Um, we'll decide what we are going to work on for next year. So it's, it's gonna take a little while for us to figure out exactly what we're doing, but we are tossing ideas around.
So what happened to the ideas from this year, at the SSEC level, RSEC level? Do you guys, do you guys put together a report and then share? So will be, will you bring back some things for us to hear, what happened, what you guys focused on this year?
Yeah. Yeah, um, so the two, the two workgroups for RSEC were, were, um, the opioid crisis and how we can, we can make suggestions, we don't have, we can't tell schools, hey, you have to put this thing in, you have to do this, you know, like, this is, you know, we don't have, we are, um, we can make suggestions and say, hey, this would be helpful, or if you could implement these sort of things. Um, but also a lot of the things that we want to do need money, and that's a big issue, so.
I know the feeling, welcome to our world.
Yeah. Um, so, like, uh, the final report, our, the last meeting that we had for RSEC, uh, most schools, we had a snow day that day, most schools had like, um, they get, they didn't have school, they had like a half day or something, or it was already an early release, so, um, so a lot of kids did not go to that meeting, so the, the girl who had the report for the opioid crisis workgroup, we still don't have the report yet because she hasn't, um, she was not at the meeting and she hasn't sent it, um, in to our advisor for, um, the Western Mass, um, RSEC. So, we don't have the report yet, um, but a lot of ideas were suggested about like Narcan and stuff in schools. You, I mean, you need money for those things, and so it's hard to, like, say, hey, you, you guys should definitely put this in, you know, you have to do this because, first of all, you know, we can't make suggestions, you know, you need the money, so schools are not always likely to implement ideas, but like, it's, it's important to also have that student feedback, no matter what. Um, you know, so, uh, the other workgroup was the College and Career Readiness Workgroup. Um, our final report, the College and Career Readiness, and our final report was sent in, and our advisor read it over and she sent it to, like, her, like, like, yeah, um, who comes to our, our state meetings. And she's gonna read it over, um, and it has to be passed back and forth a few times between people before it can get, uh, sent out to schools, um, so.
She will see something.
But, but yeah, um, I will bring back what, what ends up happening with that. Um, the state level, there was the, um, Health and Wellness Workgroup, uh, ESSA, and then, well, the legislative, legislative group, and they review like laws and stuff regarding education. Um, they, they worked on, when there was, uh, well, the one thing that they asked us about was a bill regarding, um, ELA and like, how, I'm not, eh, they didn't make it quite clear to us what they were gonna be doing with the bill, or what they were gonna be really researching, but something about like English language learning and like, uh, how many kids are like in those programs and stuff around the state. It wasn't really clear what exactly they were gonna be doing, but, um, everything is being finalized at the next meeting, so I definitely will have stuff to bring, um, back from that. And then the Health and Wellness Group had two separate workgroups, um, the group that I was in was working on a list of, uh, well, mental health, and that was our, like, smaller groups, so we worked on like ways that we can reduce stress. Um, stress dogs were on the list. Uh.
Stress dog?
Yeah. That was, that was my favorite one, so. The dogs were really cute.
I've got one right down the street, he can, guys can borrow him here at the school.
Um.
He could just roll over on his back and chew.
That's all he would do.
Instantly stress-free, you know, it's great.
It's.
Um, uh, stress dogs, um, some meditation sort of stuff, um, I believe is on the list. Uh, there were a lot of different things, um. I can also, uh, it, that was shared with me, so I can, I can pull it up, um, for the next meeting, um. I lost where it was, oh, um, yeah, so that was that workgroup. And the final report, everything is already done for that group, so that's all set. Um, all the groups have been working on their final reports, so it should all be set for the last meeting. Um, the other part of the group was working on, um, what, the wellness curriculum and, um, like phys ed and stuff like, uh, as, um, as one of the, uh, the kids said in the last meeting, um, not so much, like, this is just one example of something that they were talking about, um, refraining from teaching just abstinence, cuz like, they're all like, cuz, yeah.
Sex ed?
Cuz they're like, let's be honest, I mean, we all know, so as from like a student's perspective, you know, we all know what's happening, so if we refrain from just teaching that and we instead implement, how can you have safe sex and how can you, like, say, like, like, instead of just, you know what I mean, like different ways of, um, teaching, so that it's just a better curriculum for kids, and, um, coming from that student's standpoint, like, we all, like, know the issues that are, like, facing us, um, and like, the drugs and alcohol and sex ed and stuff. So, those were all topics that they discussed, uh, and like, feel like this is just going in a circle, but like, you, you know what I mean, right, like.
So you'll bring us some final reports from these?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. The last group was ESSA, um, and they worked on, that was, that's in place of No Child Left Behind, and, um, that, they were talking about, what, a fourth, there were four brackets that they could, um, this, it was going to use for, uh, like, judging how well schools are doing, and so the first three brackets already were finalized, um, the last one was still kinda up in the air. Um, and so they were kind of coming with ideas and stuff on how you can really accurately measure like how well a school is doing, because, you know, uh, MCAS, you know, scores and the other, like, uh, testing in the schools and stuff, and like grades might not necessarily reflect the environment or the atmosphere, or the, the school climate, as we said a lot, um, and like, how well a school is necessarily doing. I mean, academically, like, you might be, like, really, a very, very, your school might be doing very well, but, you know, it might not be necessarily very, uh, inviting atmosphere in your school, and that's also something that needs to, you know, be worked on, so.
Test scores can't be the only way to measure whether or not a school is a good place or not.
Exactly. Yeah, um, so they were discussing that, and, um, they, I believe that they're on to, like, finish up their final report and everything for our next meeting. So, um, I definitely will have, uh, this to share with you guys.
Anything else?
Yeah. Sorry, there's a lot more I've talked about.
The reason why I, I like that you're going into some details and maybe we can just, uh, focus on these later, because when we were in Boston last week, there were students from other school districts who were there with, you know, their, uh, school committees and teachers and other educators, um, who, who were taking notes and who were really, you know, prepared, and it's, it's not really a surprise that you guys are focusing on things that, I mean, I did not know about, that you guys were, uh, you know, talking about ESSA, you were talking about opioid crisis and all that stuff, so. There are a lot of things that we don't hear about them, that means we don't hear the student perspective, and given that your performances are both on RSEC and SSEC, it probably would be very helpful for us to hear the student, uh, perspective, that's one. Number two, if you have friends who would like to come, whether from Granby or other places, for a presentation, feel free to invite them over. Uh, it's important for us to hear, I think for everyone, to hear student perspective.
Yeah, I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah. Cool, that's my little spiel, so, back to you.
Um. Oh, yeah, so promised the Saturday, uh, from six to eleven at the Hotel UMass, uh, the theme is Candyland. Uh, oh, I love candy, it was, it was very fun. The music was really good, the food was really good, candy was very good, um, everyone looked great, and they had, um, a great time. Uh, uh, this Thursday, May fourth, the Red Cross will be having a blood drive at the high school. Um, and then.
Is this for students only, or for the schools only?
No, I, wait, staff.
It's for the public?
Yeah.
Or for, but for the school community? No, it's not open to the public, is it?
You do have to.
You have to be eighteen, right?
Right, I don't know if they would accept, uh, a call-in, I think, uh, you'd have to call the high school main office,
Uh, without a.
and, uh, Karen Rainin is organizing it, so, um, I do know, like, I have an appointment at ten,
Okay. Alright.
So, if I'm not here at negotiation, I'm just kidding.
But it's, you can anyway, right, it's, yeah, it's not gonna be, something will be on TV by then.
Right.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
So. I just didn't want people to be confused if they hear it, then they show up, okay, no worries.
Oh.
Um, and then the middle school will be having their spring fling semi-formal, formal on May nineteenth from six to nine thirty.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that here?
Yeah.
They do that here?
I think all their.
Do they always do that?
Um, they didn't when I was in middle school, I think it started like after.
Well, they did last year, I remember it was after you'd been here, and there was, there was music coming out of the cafeteria, actually, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they started like. They started, I think, after I was out of middle school, and then, yeah, all their dances have been in the cafeteria.
Cool.
Yeah, that just started a few years ago.
Yeah.
Hey, that's nice, but.
Yeah, it's cute.
Yeah. Get some social interaction, right? That's cool, anything else on it though? That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, any questions? Okay, alright, thanks. If you wanna stay, you can stay, if you have to leave, feel free, as always. Okay, so, should we take a little pause here?
Sure.
Okay. So, we have a school committee member who will be, who is with us, possibly for the last time, but we didn't wanna risk it, because we don't know whether or not we're gonna have a meeting next week, uh, even though we're trying to, uh, schedule one.
I probably won't be able to make it anyway.
We are.
Alright, so that, this was a good call, to just, uh, uh, put this recognition, uh, on our agenda, even though it's not, uh, here specifically. So, um, Jim, I wanna start by saying, uh, simply, uh, thank you, and thank you very much, um. Jim's, uh, contribution to the, um, to the school committee, the last four years, four years, right? You had one and then three. Um, was basically bringing his perspective, which was very rich, uh, with his background and experience in the school district. Which quite frankly, I truly appreciate it because you knew a lot of things that were not really clear to me, and that were not really easy to find anywhere, even if we wanted to, so you had that history, that experience, that background, that, that, that I personally found very, very helpful. But the other amazing thing is Cheryl and I were, uh, chatting earlier, uh, your commitment to this school district is, is, uh, uh, amazing, uh, it's awesome, uh, you know, I was trying to find how long you've been with the school district, and it wasn't that difficult to find since, uh, you know, there, there were several pieces of news, uh, around your retirement, uh, as a principal of East Meadow School. So, you, um, after being a teacher for fourteen years, a principal for twenty-four, uh, and thinking that you were able to get out of here after thirty years of service, I think, uh, something special happened, I'm not sure if it happened before, you were a write-in, even though you were not really asking for it. So that shows how much your, your, uh, input.
Someone was up to no good.
It was more than just one person, like all that, so. So, um, so Jim found, uh, his way back to, uh, the school district, this time, uh, as a member of the, uh, school committee, uh, but, you know, uh, forty-two years, uh, of service, uh, as much as it is appreciated, it's a long time, and we understand that, uh, uh, you just wanted to take a little break, and, uh, uh, but I know that you're gonna be with us, you're gonna come back to the meetings, you're gonna help us whenever we need your help. But again, I really, uh, want to, uh, thank you very much for being a member of the committee, for all your contribution, uh, and, uh, and we'll see you around.
Thank you very much. I was just thinking the other day, that basically in my tenure as principal for twenty-four years, I worked with through basically three superintendents, and in my four years here, I basically worked with three superintendents. That doesn't seem quite right, something, something's not right there, but anyway, um.
The other thing that I found out is, even though you mentioned it, uh, a few times, I did not know that the duration was, uh, that long, that when you, uh, started as, uh, a principal, you were actually a principal for both East Meadow and West Street for five years.
Oh, wow.
Which, you know, a few years ago, when we combined the position, we thought, wow, we're, we, we came up with a novel idea, apparently novelty was with Jim, so.
Being all innovative.
So, um, so you, you have a lot of, um, uh, a lot of different ways, uh, uh, and you had a lot of different ways to help the school district, uh, and, and that was always appreciated. And it was always good to go to East Meadow when the kids were young and, you know, see you welcoming us to, uh, East Meadow, so I know that you are a very special part of, uh, at least my kids', uh, lives, and I know that all the other kids' lives,
Mine too, yep.
and they always remember their, uh, days at East Meadow very fondly, uh, probably, uh, primarily because of, uh, the environment that you created, uh, at that school, so that's, that's very much appreciated as well.
It was, it was a fun ride, it really was, yeah.
And you coached sports as well, years ago, too, so I mean, it's not only just being a teacher and a principal, but
Yeah.
also heavily involved in sports, and, and you coached my brother, and my brother's much older than I am, so, um, and I had, I had Jim as a sixth grade teacher, and then my son had him as a principal, so, um.
Ditto.
Yeah. So, you know, so have it, having that history and, and seeing, you know, I know that for me anyway, you know, Gregory was always very protected when Jim was there as principal, and I always appreciated it, so, and it's been a joy working with you on school committee.
It's, it's great working with everyone, because it's, the thing I learned in my career, it, we have to work together to get things done, nobody can do it by themselves, you know? It takes, it really takes a lot of people to make things happen, and, you know, we made things happen, you know?
Yeah.
It made my job easier, you know, that's for sure, cuz I, I can tell people, I can still be doing it, you know, but I just, there's something just said, enough was enough, you know, I took care of a lot of people for a long time, so I thought I would take care of myself, but I haven't gotten away yet because, you know, because the school system is, you know, that's my life, you know?
Yeah.
It's been my life, so.
Yeah. And that, that's the only thing that you're doing in town anyway.
No, I do.
Uh, between your Lions Club and, you know, the, your ski club and the grandkids and all that, so. Uh, but we'll, we'll probably keep you busy, you know, even when you think that you're running away from us, so.
Unless I move out of state, I'll still be around.
We'll still get you here, don't worry about it.
But it's getting, it's getting to the point that, that, I think it's, it's the present sophomore that is the last group I had, it's just for one year. So it's pretty getting to the point now, I see a lot of kids, I don't know who they are, you know, so I'm losing that.
The sophomore class now?
The present sophomore class, they were, I had them for fourth grade for one year.
Wow, time flies, huh?
Yeah.
So you're saying the freshmen don't know you?
No, I just know someone through the ski club if they join or something, if they're brothers, but even then, I look at the extended families, that there's really not the families, you know? So, but, it is what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple more graduating classes, the other, before that, I won't really know them. I won't have any connections with them, you know, so.
Not, not through school at least. So should we take a little break? Call it, call it a little recess, and then we'll get back, we have a little, uh, cake, um, and then we'll take a little break, we're gonna return,
Sure.
Okay.
Just a quick recess for five, ten minutes. Uh, next on our agenda is new business, the diffuselator donation.
Yes. Um, so, uh, unfortunately, my meeting, uh, with the, um, gentleman who donated, uh, the equipment, uh, was postponed, um, but I do hope to have, uh, either our nurse leader, Karen Solzak, uh, uh, at the next meeting to, uh, present the gift for us.
Do we have this, do I sort of?
I believe we do, yes, yeah.
Okay, well, we, we already have, uh. Diffuselator donation.
Yes, mm-hmm, from a similar program, mm-hmm.
District, okay. Cool, so next time?
Yes.
Alright, so going to old business, uh strategic plan and review?
Uh s- more focused on budget.
Okay. Any anything on strategic plan? Review, do you mind if I uh add a couple of things based on our?
Nope, I what I will say is uh the entry plan findings, um will tie directly into strategic plan and review for next time, so.
So we're gonna have the entry plan next time too, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yep.
Alright, so the strategic plan, um. We agreed that part of our role as a school committee is advocacy, so you know, reaching out to the elected officials, uh to other school committees.
Mm-hmm.
Uh to obviously uh the public to make sure that we get input, we get feedback, but also we inform. Uh everyone about what's going on in this district and see if we can collaborate on some some things. Uh one of the events that is happening every year in Boston is called Day on the Hill. Uh is an event that we, I don't know, when was the last time anybody from our school committee went to that, but we typically missed. Uh given our d- decision to be part of those uh events, Cheryl, Marie and I. Uh went to Boston on Tuesday, Tuesday. Um that was a very good event, uh it validated a few things, one of them is that the biggest problem around education across the state is funding. Uh a lot of people, a lot of people uh were going through the same uh issues and same conversations that we are. There were uh state representatives and state senators who are either part of the education committees or um. Uh they were part of the Ways and Means or uh other finance related committees. And they were uh explaining to the participants how they were trying to. Uh find additional support for um for public education. So two things, one was the foundation budget conversation, which uh we could even talk about uh when we get to the budget. And how the calculation needs to change and how the current gap, according to those who created the report, which was actually commissioned by the House. In fact, it was House and Senate, they both commissioned uh that report, which was submitted to uh the State House. In October two thousand fifteen, so we've been waiting for this thing to catch some fire, um. They were saying that the estimated gap between what the schools uh public schools are receiving from the state. Based on the premise and promise of the nineteen ninety-three um uh act. Uh the gap is about one to two billion dollars, uh depending on how you look at it, this is across the state, so. Uh line by line, they were able to show where uh where the gap was happening. And um the top two items were items that are very familiar to us as well, the first one is uh health insurance, in fact, overall benefits. Uh the second one was special education. Because when they first came up with um the formula in nineteen ninety-three, um they. Uh or they approved the formula and it became uh the law, they thought that, hey, you know what, let's just make an assumption. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, the health insurance increase assumption was one percent per year. And when somebody mentions that, that that's what it was, right, one percent? Uh when that gets mentioned, everybody laughs because you know, even then, it wasn't a realistic assumption, now it's uh not even close, especially given the. Uh the uh discussion that we're having a- around healthcare and the cost of uh healthcare. Uh the second one was around um special education and special education funding is fluctuating, and that's the biggest problem. Uh the. At least one of the assumptions was close to uh correct, they assumed that on average, school districts were gonna have about fifteen percent. Of their population on uh special education. Or fifteen percent of the population uh w- will need some type of special education. The actual average is about sixteen percent or so. That said, that doesn't mean that they were that close, the fluctuations in the cost of special education is basically causing all the problem, again, in nineteen ninety-three. The cost of special education uh wasn't what it is today, including the services that are needed. Um the 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 transportation that goes along with that, the programs that are required. And that brought us to a to the third topic, which only came up because somebody asked a question. Which is related to mandates. Uh and I think it goes under uh under discussed uh in many cases, because we know that how um the the. Insurance benefits and special education conversations dominate most of these uh most of these events, most of these conversations. Uh so the state auditor uh last year requested a full audit of all mandates across the board, not just for education, but for all. Um departments. To see which one of those mandates were uh outdated or redundant or unnecessary. Uh to be able to ask the legislator whether they would be i- uh inclined to to um do away with some of those mandates. That that report uh was not readily available to us, but it seems that a good chunk of the uh burden. Or at least part of the burden is also coming from uh from the mandates that are sent our way without any uh supporting funding. Uh and we know some of those, uh in fact, you know, the special education uh has a lot of uh mandates uh attached to it, but the funding uh doesn't change. Uh the second event, um we were able to then follow up, this is this was a morning uh meeting that was organized uh by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um and I, as I mentioned earlier, there were a lot of students that came uh with the school committees and their teachers. Uh and their uh elected officials. Um after that, we went to the State House um looking to speak to our elected officials, uh we actually. Uh caught up with our state senator and had a nice conversation and he was nice enough to uh. Uh take us to the gallery, the the senate and um and we got a couple of pictures with him there too. Um but it's not something that they're not aware of, it's something that they are very much aware of. Um the one thing that is that was very uh interesting to me is that even though everybody almost says that this is. Commonly agreed fact that public education is underfunded and the gap is huge, you were from one to two billion dollars and the. The s- the smallest estimate is about one billion dollars. Not everybody signed up for this thing. And I found out that one of our state representatives actually still has to uh sign up uh uh for that, the 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 uh. On the participation side as well, which probably we can urge him to uh do so. Um so. With that, I will jump to another event that I went to on Thursday uh in in East Hampton, again, it was East Hampton School Committee that. Organized it, but it was um two main speakers, one of them was uh uh Tracy Novick. Uh from MASC, Massachusetts uh Association of uh School Committees. And also the um chief of staff of um Sonia uh Chang Diaz, who is the chair uh senate chair of. She's is she the senate, yeah, senate chair uh of the education committee and um. And they went through a lot of stuff, obviously, whatever was mentioned in Boston, um they they came up, um. They acknowledged the the gap again uh and all that. But what we are hearing now, at least what I heard there, was something uh pretty um. Pretty common, I guess, in politics, that if you want something to be done, even though we know the uh problem. If you want something to be done, get accomplished. Please let everybody know to reach out to their elected officials and uh push and push and push. Um because there are so many things that everybody brings to the table as their own priorities, that you don't want this one to be lost. And as far as funding, uh there are there are some suggestions, but the the closest opportunity is coming in. Uh less than two years, it's gonna come to a uh ballot box vote. It is called the Fair Share Act, which we mentioned, I think, in a couple of meetings, um uh here as well. And um the last thing that the House has to do uh is basically vote on it and say, yes, we approve and it ha- it it can go to the ballot. And it's gonna go to the ballot next year, not this year, but it's gonna go to the ballot next year, as soon as it is it is approved, if it does get approved. It's gonna become law and the uh FY twenty twenty budget. Will have to reflect the additional funds that will be estimated to be collected through the Fair Share Act.
Which are earmarked for education and transportation.
Which are absolutely, which are earmarked for two uh line items only, uh one, the first one is education and number two is transportation. Um so again, I'm only mentioning this and tying these two events, because what I am understanding is that. We're not only gonna have to just talk to, we will not have to talk to our elected officials and you know, continue this conversation, we're gonna have to reach out to the public. And inform them as much as possible about these uh pending legislations and changes to the foundation formula. To ask for their help, to reach out, whether it's, you know, a template that we can create uh as a letter.
We talked about that at one point, mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they can just sign and send, maybe they can create something online and it automatically gets uh uh sent that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're gonna need a lot of support from the public, it's not just Granby, but we are a Granby school committee, so we're gonna start with our own. Uh our own community here.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanted to uh bring that up because uh really strategy. Is good, um we have a lot of great plans uh to be realized, but. Number one priority is to find the sources to fund those priority priorities that are ahead of us. Anyone has any questions or anything to add, you or Cheryl?
I um I kept thinking about something I heard during that meeting that we all kind of, we jumped when somebody, somebody somebody from Newton said. I hear all these schools complaining about, you know, not having enough population, what about when you have too much and we can't build enough schools, and I'm like, we all went, send them here, um.
It's a nice problem to have.
But right, but what I but what I was really thinking about and what's been really hitting me is, you know, we've been talking for a couple of years now.
Yeah.
About how our our student population is dwindling and it's really all going east of, you know. East of here, so it's all it's all going obviously towards, you know, Newton and that area, um and they are totally overpopulated. And obviously, those students aren't gonna come all the way out here, but you know, when we're talking in town and especially at town meeting, um. Two voters in Granby, we really mean it when a- and it's for all of Western Mass, it's the Berkshires, it's all the way here. Until you get over to like one twenty-eight and the thing is, they might be overpopulated, but that's where everybody's going, because it's where the jobs are and you know. It this is a a regional problem and I think that the more. Town voters understand that, that this is really, it's not just Granby, like, you know, we were actually talking to.
Right.
A school committee member from Belcher Town, they're having the same problems, um we were walking around with him, talking to Senator Lesser. It's it's quite interesting to be in that big of a room, where most of us are complaining about dwindling student population. And somebody raises their hand and says, but wait, we can't even build schools fast enough. But it's shocking to hear that when we're having such a problem, so I just wanted to remind people that. It that's really what's happening here, it's it's not it's not Granby, it's really everywhere west of Boston. And that we need to remember that and that, you know, yeah, unfortunately, the weight does fall on taxpayers and unfortunately, that's not gonna change this year. But part of that is really trying to understand the fair share amendment and. That it's not going to affect most of us, um except in a good way, so it is going to help education, it is gonna help, you know, fix our roads and and. And take care of transportation. And we need to start pushing that now, because right now, there's no opposition, it's going to come, and that is one thing Senator Lesser was telling us about, like. We're just waiting for, you know, some rich people to start pouring money into it, like they did charter schools, you know? Businesses and and very rich people were pouring money into the charter school question, for what reason?
And and that failed.
And. Right, so but the thing is, it's because.
So keep that in mind.
Because because people really worked together to get what we wanted and that has to happen with the Fair Share Amendment, otherwise. There there's not going to be a solution, we have to get money into the foundation budget and it's, right now, like a- as Emery said, that's the closest. Chance to have that happen, so in about five hundred and fifty-five days.
And so to add to Marie's comment about um the declining enrollments in Western Mass, um that's not to forget the Rural Schools Coalition that has started and formed. Um because you know, there is no doubt that the chapter seventy budget uh funding formula was designed so that. The quality of your education should not be dependent upon your zip code. Um and so we have to be very strong advocates for the fact that um education in rural communities. Um is uh becoming more of a burden to property tax, um and how can we uh as a commonwealth. Uh decide how we are going to fund equitably, uh so that if there's a rural distribution, which many states that have rural populations embark on. Whether we start looking at some efficiencies in terms of shared uh resources, which we're currently doing, our BCBA, we're looking at. A shared um perhaps um LD teacher, so I I.
What is BCVA?
Uh behavioral, oh my goodness, um uh behavioral.
Consultant?
BC, oh.
I don't know.
It's a behavioral and it's a behavioral consultant, behavioral analyst, and they work with the special ed kids.
Yeah, it's it's a behavioral analyst. Yeah, oh yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Specifically around um uh we're doing, we're using that in our autism programs uh and looking at. Uh how we support teachers in uh supporting our students, um collecting data and giving recommendations, so those are the kinds of. Um uh collaborations that we need to continue to look at, but there is no doubt that rural communities do need. Uh to have a strong voice, the legislature, uh when these decisions are are talked about, um because we don't wanna be forgotten. Uh because we are or just happen to be west of four ninety-five.
Hmm.
So to Deanne's point, the wh- what what we heard was exactly that. Um the reason why the charter, the question too related to charter schools um failed. Uh so the expansion was, expansion of charter schools uh uh was halted. Is because I believe almost every school committee signed up.
Mm-hmm.
Signed on uh the petition to to vote against it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and they were saying that uh we need something like that as time gets close to support uh the fair share and then the change in the. Uh foundation formula. So the last thing for me to wrap this section is, as Marie mentioned, there was a member of the school committee from Belcher Town, then Thursday. Uh East Hampton uh school committee member who was opening the session. Uh she said, well, if anybody would like to uh reach out and work together, so I talked to her afterwards. So we we already asked two school committees if they would like to be part of some conversation, hopefully in the coming days, um and this this is gonna be soon enough. Uh we're gonna invite uh districts around us and other districts that may have an interest in joining us for a conversation, so that. We can start something on the eastern, on the western side of the state too, uh and have uh. Have different ideas thrown around, at least uh it doesn't just have to be what we know, it can be something that we don't yet know.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I'm welcome, thank you. Um so with that, we're we're gonna move to FY seventeen, do we have anything on FY seventeen?
No. No, that will come.
Okay, about FY eighteen?
Uh so I shared with you um the printout, um I find it easier to see.
Yeah.
Um and so as this uh if there are changes, um certainly, we'll update this for you. Um you can see the bottom right-hand corner in the dark green is the seven hundred and fifty-six uh three ninety-eight that we are looking at in terms of. Um you can see the bottom right-hand corner in the dark green is the seven hundred and fifty-six uh three ninety-eight that we are looking at in terms of deficit. And so I did wanna ask the committee um it's for some direction in terms of um looking at that deficit, um uh maybe some ideas about uh or goals, uh maybe to go back to the strategic plan. Um but that number, the leadership team has been working on, um and I wanna remind the committee that about five hundred thousand dollars of cuts are still on the floor from last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that is uh, you know, teachers mainly at the elementary school. Um and so to get to seven fifty-six is extremely difficult, um it was difficult last year, it continues to be even more difficult this year. And I would just caution the committee that, you know, we will get to the point where there is nowhere else to go. Um and we are close to that uh this year, but if we continue to see declining enrollment, we just continue to see declining Chapter Seventy, we continue to see an increase in school choice out and that gap, we start with every year with increased healthcare costs and fixed cost increases. If that maintains at the eight hundred or seven hundred thousand, um there will be nowhere left to go in terms of cutting to make that happen. Um.
And if we continue with that paradigm, then we continue with the vicious cycle of um dissuading more parents sending their kids to our district. If if we're threatening cuts every year.
Mm-hmm.
And I I feel very strongly about that. Um you know, I I understand that this is, you know, going to the town and asking for for more funds. I- i- is puts a lot of stress on the town financially, um and I also feel firm firmly that this is, this is not a school problem, this is a town problem and it needs to be addressed at the town level. So I I think it's a combination of stabilization funds and maybe some sort of tax override with you know, having having this fair share amendment in the works. Um but I am not, I'm, I've said this before, I'm not in favor of cutting any more teacher positions, any more arts, any more athletics. I'm just.
Have have we so look, if we look at the 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 biggest line item on here is transportation. We mentioned briefly, and I realize this is controversial, but is laying off teachers is also pretty controversial. Um what can we do to lower our transportation? We discussed a fee,
Mm-hmm.
um expanding the, how close the kids can can live. How how much of an impact would it be if, say, we stop busing service at tenth grade?
Mm-hmm. Or with if if there students are live within a two-mile radius, others towns around us, I mean, that's standard operating procedure at this point.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so we do need, we do need some firm numbers because I I suspect that it's a significant, it's a significant amount.
Yeah.
You know, if we looked at um adding a fee for, you know, for kids,
Mm-hmm.
expanding that circle, let's start here, let's let's, you know.
Yeah, I wouldn't, especially in terms of um consolidating some of the bus service, I would not wanna do any of that before we gather some data.
Mm-hmm.
So we find out what it really means, whether it's a, it's a radius within which, you know, students live, or whether or not some of the runs are needed.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And I think we're gonna look at that anyway, once the uh contract is finalized. And we don't even know whether this is the final number because uh the bid had to be redone. Do we know when that's gonna be finalized?
I apologize, I meant to ask Mark today and I did not. Um he did, I think, um
Okay.
mention that it would not have to be the full bid process, um that it could be shortened, um but I don't know when it's gonna bid and when it'll be awarded.
Okay, and it's still open to everyone, right? It's not just the top two, three, whatever, it's it's a
Correct. Yeah.
with it. Um.
So uh what I can do is um I can ask Mark tomorrow and I I will send out an email uh with that information. And when the bus bid is awarded, then we can sit down with the bus company and go through some of those uh alternates, whether it's uh looking at bus stops, looking at routing, looking at the 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 fee for service under two miles.
We We can do some preliminary work?
Yes, so I can contact other districts to find out what their policies are, what their fees are, so yes, we can certainly start that process. Mm-hmm.
Belcher Town seems to be charging a fee.
Ludlow charges a fee, mm-hmm.
In fact, yeah, they they are talking about increasing the fee,
Mm-hmm.
uh which means they already had a fee for a while that, you know, they're increasing.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um so we, I mean, we're just investigating, we're not really doing anything, obviously it requires a discussion and then approval of the school committee.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
But it it never hurts to find all of our options to see what that means for us.
No.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the lower we can, we can get this number, the greater we're gonna, the greater chance we have of success
Mm-hmm.
of asking the town to support us for the next few years.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And transportation is a just
Yeah.
But isn't that the issue, the the town
seems to have the least impact.
The town pays for the transportation anyway, it's not, it's part of our budget, but we're not actually paying for it, the town is paying for it. So, correct?
Yes.
That's what comes out of the kind.
And it was three or four years ago where the um I do think the superintendent, the time, the town administrator, were making some deals where if we were saving money on transportation, they allowed it to stay in the school budget, so
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
so if we could save forty thousand and and everyone agrees that, yeah, we'll keep that forty thousand
Yes. Mm-hmm.
for a teacher or a program, well then, it's a win-win anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So if you start charging, then you gotta make an agreement that we're charging, but we want that money to stay in the school system, not give it back to the town, so
Mm-hmm.
you know, you're you're sort of darned if you do and darned if you don't, um.
Isn't that typically how other towns operate as well, with transportation?
Charging a fee?
No, with um the understanding that any savings goes back to the school. I mean, I can't imagine that that is unique to Granby. Am I, am I misunderstanding?
I I had no idea. I I I think it was unique, 'cause that's really not the way it's supposed to work, I don't think, you know?
I'm
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I either.
General fund savings go to town, that's my understanding. Um.
But bus transportation and considering, considering that the situation that we just talked about, that all school district, rural school districts are in, I can't imagine that we would be reinventing the wheel, expecting transportation savings to come back to the school.
I mean, I, uh at least in principle, I understand and agree with what you're saying that if we're gonna play this school budget and town budget and give and take, then we'll fall into the same old trap. At the end of the day, if money is safe from transportation and transportation is related to schools and we are able to do that by finding some efficiencies, uh then we should be able to have that conversation, at least from my perspective, it makes sense, because it was originally meant for uh education anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So we should be able to have that conversation, whether or not it's the norm, it's typically done that way, I I don't know, it's a good conversation to
Mm-hmm.
And the reality of it is, in the school budget, the two biggest expenses are teacher salaries and transportation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
What do the other communities charge? What does Belcher Town, Ludlow charge?
I don't wanna misspeak.
But I mean, so there's nothing to stop us
No.
from charging a hundred dollars, let's throw out, a hundred dollars for, for everyone who rides a bus, whether you ride in it three times a year or a hundred and seventy times. Or whether you leave a mile or ten miles, it's a flat rate, a hundred dollars for everyone who ride a bus.
There is some legislation, I believe, around what we're required to transport at for free, in other words.
I thought it was mi- anything over a mile and a half.
Right.
Um you have to transport, I I again, I'm
It it's something like Right. I thought it was two miles, but so there, you know, if we're transporting everyone, then we have the potential for the
Mm-hmm.
zero to two miles as a fee-based service, because we're not required to provide that.
But even beyond the two miles, we could charge, we could charge, you're right.
We could charge anyone, right? We could charge everyone at a flat rate.
That's not how I read the
I think No.
But I will, I will look into it.
Yeah, that that's one thing that we should, we should absolutely investigate for next time and find out.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I actually tried to do some research, but I can't find the exact fee and in fact, right now I'm just uh looking at Ludlow because I was trying to find Belcher Towns earlier. And I, there is nothing here either, just uh, oh actually, there is something. Two hundred and forty-two dollars first child, hundred and thirty-five additional child.
No.
Um
Does it say?
Hundred and twenty-one one-way only, if you're not using it on the return, so they have
So it's for all kids?
For all kids?
It's flat.
No, for every kid, yeah.
It's flat, right?
No, it's not for all kids, it's for the difference between two miles to a it's for the walkers, basically, anyone who would be
One and a half miles or less, the number of miles from your home to your assigned school is one and a half miles or less.
Okay. One and a half miles or less.
They have to, they have to pay.
They pay that fee, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I thought it was one and a half miles, so then everybody from one and a half miles or more
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't have to pay?
is
Correct.
is require
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's not gonna
And that goes back to one of the conversations that came up.
It's not gonna be lucrative.
Apparently, originally in nineteen ninety-three, the intent was to at least reimburse part of the transportation cost as well, and they just, they said, you know what, we don't wanna have anything to do with that. Which with the regional uh schools was one of the big attractions, just, you know, the state is reimbursing and the first thing that gets cut
Mm-hmm.
when the budget has a shortcoming is the regional transportation, just they say, we can't, we can't afford it. So transportation is a big line item and nobody wants to touch it. Think about it, if it, if in Granby, it's seven hundred thousand dollars per year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's millions of dollars in uh many other places. In fact, in Belcher Town, it was uh a couple of million dollars or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
So where would you, where is a mile and a half from here?
Yeah, we should look into that and let's see what what it is I haven't
Well, just
Not gonna be many people.
Uh that's that's what, I mean, that's sort of just deflated my balloon.
That's
Yeah.
Is town, town center close to it?
Rural towns, let's see.
That's right?
Yeah. So the other, the second thing, if we can find out, uh we had this conversation last time and we included it because we did not wanna uh um miss the opportunity because of some uh misunderstanding.
Where is it? Where are you?
Can we find out what the data analyst position means for us and
Mm-hmm.
what the components are, what the services that we're gonna receive will be,
That's
What are you talking?
whether or not there are different ways we can approach that. I mean, it's already in our approved budget, but if there are ways we can find some efficiencies that might be
Yep. Mm-hmm. Just that? Mm-hmm.
I think
one way, another thing that we can look at.
Oh my gosh.
Mm-hmm.
Have the, have the school trace numbers grown at all since the last time we met?
No.
Choosing to come here?
So are we gonna put the ad back or is there any other way we can do it? First of, let me ask you this, in a very, maybe this may be very naive, are school districts, are all school districts are school districts in general close to the idea of somebody else advertising in their district? 'Cause you had mentioned that there are some districts at least who said that they may want to take advantage of our social emotional learning program, is that correct?
Yes.
So are, is that, is anything happening there or?
So that's, that's a little bit different, so we do advertise um our programming, um and that's a tuition-based program. So yes, we have interest in students from other districts, um paying a tuition to come to Granby to participate in social emotional learning. Um Carol will be here uh next time talking about um an LD program, um and an autism program. And so those are the kinds of tuition in programs that can help those programs sustain themselves, but also generate revenue for the district.
But we also can only
We can only accommodate what we can accommodate, correct?
accept and accommodate, yeah.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we don't, you know, we don't
Right.
we don't wanna run the risk of the quality of the program.
Exactly. Mm-hmm, yeah.
So um how about outgoing students, when, is there a deadline for them to let us know their intention? Uh when do we find out? Some approximate number?
Typically at scheduling, so right now at the high school, for example, we have uh tallies happening of student schedules, which allows us to determine uh the numbers of courses that we need to offer, uh and the staffing that's required to to fill those positions, uh to fill those classrooms, rather. Um and then, you know, honestly, you know, parents can decide, you know, up until the first day of school, really, uh not to come. And and honestly, you know, when you're on a waitlist uh somewhere, they they may not know themselves.
Which means
Um so really, my goal and vision of the leadership team is is to make Granby um attractive, um and a great place to be, uh which it is. Uh and to try and change that perception, and I think that we are going down the right road for that. Um we're not hearing that families are are talking about leaving, um uh but uh we also haven't gotten real deep into the budget discussion, which is typically when people start to ask and really start to push about, you know, well, what does this mean? Because we've talked about this, where there's contractual obligations we have to let people know, uh staff members know whether or not they potentially um have a position or not.
So if decisions can be made until school starts,
Mm-hmm.
that's late, uh
Mm-hmm.
obviously it's not gonna help us with the numbers, but that also at the very least tells me that we have an opportunity to talk with those individuals, uh and hear their concerns and maybe address that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And I I think we're all prepared to have those conversations, it's a matter of getting those conversations going.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how if we have one every week, I would show up if we can answer questions.
Sure, mm-hmm.
Um I mean, it's that important. But folks will not really know a few things that we just talked about, you know, why they, you know, Granby is uh good for them. We have to really make the case and repeat the case and make, you know, uh make sure that they hear why this is a great district.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, uh we, as you mentioned, we have to have this good conversation at the town meeting around our budget too, so that they, we can at least uh uh you know, only the fear is that we're not, we're not um we're not really proposing any cuts to academics. And number three, we have to really make a good case to our own community, and I'm saying number three, but by no means it is uh third in uh significance, to make sure that we are able to explain why we are in the situation that we're in, what we're planning on doing, and how we are hoping that this will turn around.
Mm-hmm.
And why it is really detrimental to, in a somewhat uh sh- uh short-sighted, uh near-sighted way, um continue to cut uh the services and academics and core curriculars and extracurriculars, because it's not, it's gonna be, it's gonna, it's not gonna help us at all.
Mm-hmm.
What with the um, well, because I'm more familiar with these numbers, 'cause it was, it was an issue for us a year ago. You know, I'll just refer to Mrs. Smith and her, 'cause they were concerned about, we had the issue of the high numbers of grade three coming to four. Even at budget time, we were, they weren't happy, no, we were looking at twenty-nine kids in a fourth grade classroom. It never, it never happened that way.
Correct.
It got to twenty-four, I think.
Mm-hmm.
But right now, so it's forty-eight. Now we have the issue of the one I know, 'cause it's easy to do, of two fourth grades, are they going to three fifth grades? And we said, yes, but if we could get ten school choice.
Correct.
So it doesn't look like we're getting them, they may come, but so what do we do? What's happening to that extra teacher? Is that, is that part of the thing, are they going somewhere else because someone's retiring?
Right, so we had a retirement. Um so right now, uh currently, we would maintain the uh two at grade four. Um we would, the current grade four moving up would be two in grade five, um and with the retirement at grade six, um we would be looking to move uh a position into grade six.
A teacher.
Um and then, you know, in a, in a district like Granby, a smaller district, that happens, where a teacher may, you know, teach at, you know, a different grade level, given the size of the student body uh at the grade level.
So that, that, that salary is, is of, is in our present budget.
Correct.
We've already taken that salary out, 'cause we've saved that salary, but we haven't lost a person.
Mm-hmm. Correct. So so through attrition, you will hear me talk about, we do everything we can, if we're having to make reductions, to do that through attrition. And so I need to remind the committee and and the town that we have had um two other retirements um that are built into the budget as well. Um so we've had some retirements at the high school level um that through attrition, we don't have a staff member losing a position, but we are losing a position. Um and the staff ha- are very flexible and do work under multiple licenses, so you may have someone, you know, who is uh licensed to teach Um and the staff are very flexible and do work under multiple licenses, so you may have someone, you know, who is uh licensed to teach PE. But also licensed as an English teacher, and they are flexible in doing both, and I I I give a tremendous amount of uh kudos to the staff for being willing to do that. Um and in their flexibility, um but there's only so much attrition um that's happening.
How about at the lower elementary, are we, are we cautious of any class size that's gonna really alarm a particular grade level?
Not right now, not right now. Yeah, I, we're a little bit um concerned about um one going into two, the current one going into two, because that was an, an elimination of a position last year. Um and so the concern is that if you have three first grades at sixteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, and then you put them into two at grade two. Now you've got, you know, twenty two, twenty three.
How about the two going to three, cause two wasn't, two was, there's only two this year.
Right, so there's two going.
And there I heard a lot of things about, well, they're a tougher group or something other, and are they going to two third grades?
Uh-huh. Yeah. Yes, at this point, yes.
Because we were looking at school choice and to keep a third teacher, right?
Right. Uh-huh. Right. And again, you know, if we, even if we have school choice spread out throughout the elementary school, if it generates enough revenue. You know, a teacher position could be um put into the elementary level um and used as we have in uh with the halftime, ELL halftime class reduction staff. And we could also look at interventionists as well, so while a classroom may be uh larger for part of the day. During English or during math, students that need more direct instruction, a smaller group could be um done by an interventionist teacher. Um therefore, the the classroom size reduces during, say, math and English.
How about in terms of special ed, is with the lower classes, what's the?
Yeah, so we are looking at our programming, it's a conversation at the leadership team, um you know, not to get into too many details about our students and our programs. But we do have some programs that um will phase out, in other words, we don't have students um that uh require that program. And so then we have to um look at how uh students are being taught in special education and how to reallocate staff. Um this year uh will be the last year for one of our programs, um and we do not have students coming into it. So, you know, we do have to be uh cognizant of that, and whether that, you know, inevitably means a a reduction in special education, it may. Or redistributing someone who may be, let's say, in an inclusion setting, but has another license for a moderate or severe disabilities. And we wanna start an LD classroom, or we wanna start an autism classroom, and so that teacher may uh be used in a different capacity. So we don't have to create another, you know, hire, but we use the staff that we have very creatively.
I think, I think these are just helpful things, definitely, when you talk to.
Absolutely. Uh-huh.
The leaders to be to say, hey, you're, you factor a lot of these things in, but we're already not impacting the educational program.
Yeah.
But we are being creative and realizing we are losing some people, you know, and if these people weren't retiring, like the one you're talking about, then we probably would be losing a teacher.
Yes.
So we're down the line through it, through the seniority list or something, someone would be losing their position because of their certification and level of seniority.
Uh-huh.
But if the school choice isn't there, then I think we gotta, you know, we just can't say we're gonna fill these, cause school choice.
I agree, yeah.
Um and if at school, you know, if August came and all of a sudden everybody wants to come here and the classes ballooned, well then, now you have opportunity to hire someone and do that. I remember doing that once in end of October, you know, the class grew so much, we had a, we were able to take three or four, five or six kids out of a few classrooms and give them to the new teacher.
Right. Uh-huh.
That's not impossible if, if uh sometimes it happens, everybody comes in, is in the same grade, and it's like, wow.
Right, right, well, I think that's part of something that, you know, to understand too with declining enrollment. It also impacts what, you know, the kinds of cuts or reductions that you're able to make, because you don't have twenty kids coming out of one grade level. You know, you have two out of grade one and maybe three out of grade two and a, and a few more, so it isn't as if you can say, oh. You know, we are down twenty five students at the elementary level, so we can reduce a teacher, it doesn't, that doesn't happen, so it isn't, you know, I've heard things like, oh, well. You know, the per unit cost should be declining by the same amount of declining enrollment, and that doesn't make sense in education. Um you know, I think that Lou Barry said it best when he said that, you know, we still have buildings, the lights still need to go on, the oil still needs to be paid. Um and so the reductions um aren't as easy as if you can say equitably, if you've declined this much in enrollment percentage wise. Then your budget should go down that much in percent. Um that's not a fair or adequate way to think about how we fund the education system.
It's not pie.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
How about over here, because we were looking at, you were looking at, I remember, I don't, I couldn't find the sheet, but you're looking at like ten school choice in grade eight, I think you're looking at ten in grade nine.
Yeah.
If that's not happening, how's that affecting the, the class sizes over here, uh is that, is that something again?
Right. It's something we're looking at right now at leadership, um uh you know, and unfortunately, you know, we do have the, a new principal coming on board. Um and so that hiring process we're excited about, um but that will take some time for a new person to be able to look at the schedule. Um and look at staffing and look at programming uh to make some decisions. Um so it unfortunately may be coming after budget, that doesn't mean that we're not talking about it now. Um as a matter of fact, I'll be speaking with um groups of staff at the high school and the middle school to talk about, and at the elementary to talk about the budget. Um and to get their input into uh where they see some potential um concern, uh but also some potential savings as well.
I think with this, um just to. Not to uh beat a dead horse here, but with the um school choice numbers.
Uh-huh.
Um if we expect that folks are gonna find out about Granby on their own, um there may be some cases like that, which, you know, uh there were in the past. We're not gonna get to realistically not get to the number of ninety six, we may get some, but not ninety six, so we have to be a lot more proactive than that.
Right.
So let us know how we can help on that one, I don't, honest, I'm saying, asking this question because I don't know what vehicles are available to us to reach out to other communities that are nearby or beyond that.
Uh-huh. Yep. Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
Um but we have to, until the beginning of the year, I think it falls on all of us to uh to do whatever we can to make sure that people hear about Granby. And the good things that, you know, we're always talking about, uh so that they're interested and they come here and at least take a look at the district.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
Can someone write up something for um the social media pages for the school about the SEL program?
Uh-huh.
Um. Because that could be shared through.
Hmm.
The collaborative, who also shares other public pages and.
Yeah. Proud of Western Mass.
Uh-huh. So, I mean, I think that's one way to, to get more information out there, and and seeing as that's a program that other schools might be interested in, that's a good one to, to write up something on.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh. I do know, you know, one of the things that uh we do talk about, you know, Carol is certainly at the special ed directors meetings, sharing amongst the special ed directors, the programming that we have. Um and, you know, certainly I'm sharing at the collaborative, you know, the programs that we have. Um and, you know, I think you've, you've probably heard me say, some of these things need some patience, you know, they have just started, they need to gain some roots.
Uh-huh.
We need to make sure that they're strong programs, so when we bring students here, um we know that they're going to be successful. Um and so, you know, the tuitioning in I think is important, um in terms of school choice. You know, there are many districts now that, like Granby, are advertising heavily for school choice. Um because they see it as Granby has as a way to shore up um underfunded parts of their budgets. So, you know, to your point, you know, we've spent all of our advertising budget, you know, already, so now it's in, you know, how can we help? I think it's getting word of mouth out, um I think it's advocating uh for the schools. Um but if we have school choice families that are happy and satisfied, getting them to spread the word, um that Granby is.
And, and let's face it, social media is the way to do that now, I, I mean, and I think that's, especially, you know, now that the school committee has a page, we can be sharing those stories as well from the school page.
Yep. Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
Um and then we can do it personally, and I think that, um I mean, as a parent myself, if I were looking for other schools, I'd be looking at what people are saying about those schools.
Uh-huh.
Within my parent networks, and so I think that we need to start using that a little bit more.
Uh-huh.
Since we can't use paid versions.
Yeah.
Um it, it brought me back, this whole discussion though, brought me back to one more thing that I, that I was hearing at um the day in the hill. Was the fact that the foundation budget, most towns pay more of a percentage on top of foundation. And somebody, one of, I think Senator Diaz actually, uh Sunday chain Diaz actually said. That they've seen that the, the towns who don't pay more on top of foundation budget, those schools usually don't do as well. So that, that's part of it, is that um part of the funding process is getting the town to understand why more needs to be added on, on top of the foundation.
Uh-huh.
Because that's why we're having a problem, it, you know, we can't, we can't do this on our own.
Well, and I think, you know, it needs to, you know, somehow be built into the base, to your point, it needs to be understood that this is the cost of education. And that um this gap is not the result of any mismanagement, it's not inefficiencies. Um it is, it is the result of some, many influences, but that it is the cost of educating children. Um and when it's not in the base of the budget, then we're back at the table creating instability. And, and I think that when we presented that at the select board at the joint meeting, they underst- they understand it. And to your point, it's a town meeting, it's a town issue to solve. Um and, you know, when I drive in now, I drive down School Street and there are five building lots uh on that corner. Um those will be homes, and I hope they're homes with children, um so, because Granby's a great place to bring and raise your family and and send your kids to school. Um and so I think there needs to be the investment piece um brought forward. Uh that when we invest in the schools, that we will, we will uh turn and be able to s- sustain ourselves long term as a town and as a school district. But it really does have to be brought into the base, or we're back at the same place year after year.
Well, this is the fourth year now.
And it's, you know, to your point, it's three percent over minimum net school spending, and if you recall, the average now, which is why the chapter seventy. Uh formula review was created, the average now is upwards of twenty percent over minimum net school spending. And so the burden is coming back to property owners, coming back to towns, and so while we're waiting for reform to happen. The, the bottom line is, other towns are having a greater investment and, and we are not. And so we are, um I think, you know, struggling with the, with the consequences of that decision.
Yeah.
So that's the message that needs, that needs more traction.
Uh-huh.
Um because when we talk. Uh tax override versus this adding to the base, I think it's a different conversation. When we use tax override language. I, I don't, I don't think people are understanding the full scope of what you just explained.
Uh-huh.
You know, when we, when we explain it in terms of other towns are, are providing more revenue for the schools to, to run their district. That makes more sense, don't you think, than saying we need a tax override? It's a more, it, it just explains more comprehensively what districts are facing.
Uh-huh, and again, Granby is not alone in this.
Right.
So, you know, you look at districts that are already spending the nine percent or the eleven percent, and they're looking to go to the thirteen percent, to the fifteen percent. And so it's just, you know, Granby is not alone in this, in this uh decision.
Senator, Senator Lester told us that Longmeadow, and everybody, of course, says Longmeadow has the highest taxes, well, they do, because they're actually at the top, they're, they can't do any more overrides, they're at the levy cap.
I read that.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, you know, they've been raising theirs the whole time, and I think it, it's just because of the lack of state funding, that's where we are.
Right. So if we're looking at our stabilization, the, the, the money that we move into stabilization every year, for a town our size, the general rule is three to five percent. Of your town budget should go into stabilization, and Granby traditionally is around seven percent. So if we're asking the town to fund the schools with tax money in addition to what they're already giving us, what we're really saying is. Granby, instead of putting five to seven percent for the next four years into stabilization, would you be willing to give your schools a raise until the foundation budget is addressed? And it will lower the amount that we're putting into stabilization, it will actually put us in the average for the rest of the state. I don't think that's unreasonable. We aren't asking uh any other department to make any other cuts, we understand that we are our own animal. What we're asking is, Granby, instead of taking five to seven percent and putting it in the bank, we're asking you to put three to five percent. And use the taxes you've already paid. The people in town have already funded the school, we just need to make this a formal request. In giving us more until we can, till the state sorts us out, I don't see why that's so controversial, but it is a very controversial thing to ask.
Yeah, I think there are, I mean, that's a, that's a fair point, and there are good, good stories, I, again, just our challenge so far was really to be able to go out there and tell the story.
Uh-huh.
And we slowly started doing that on Facebook and elsewhere wherever we can. Even uh that uh gentleman, the uh chief of staff uh for, for, for the senator, uh who was presenting. He is apparently from Spencer, uh Massachusetts, and he was saying, while, you know, if you can't find anything else, go look at the story of Spencer, Massachusetts.
Hmm.
Where um we did not spend, the town did not spend the money, and then real estate prices went down, and because your real estate prices are down, you can't even raise the same amount of uh tax revenue anymore. So it becomes even a different type of vicious cycle that, you know, keeps you from uh funding anything, let alone, let alone your school.
That's right.
So the, understandably, you know, have, having uh uh. Some background in economics and understanding economics and understanding that it's not really a uh pure science. You can't just say, you know, when this happens, this is gonna occur, but there is a good amount of study out there. That shows that there is a correlation between the amount of money spent on education and the uh value of property uh in, in, in many locations. There are some studies uh that show uh different conclusions as well, but I, I believe the majority of them are showing that, especially for smaller towns where you're highly dependent on your property taxes.
Uh-huh.
Residential property taxes, you don't wanna lose that uh residential value. Uh and it's not very difficult to find, we can just go find the valuation of uh of our town. Um we don't really wanna lose that valuation, that's the type of valuation that actually got us to the point where we were able to fi- uh finance a, a school. Because uh we are uh uh where we are, and we don't wanna really jeopardize that, even if we don't wanna look at it from that educational perspective, from a property uh tax perspective, it's important for everyone to keep in mind. But with all that said, and this is absolutely good conversation and, and I personally agree with the premises, uh. We have to make the point with the stories, valid stories, so if I'm, I'm digging out some stories from Spencer, if I can find something else, I will share those as well. And we have to spread that so everybody has an opportunity to read it for themselves as they make the decision. Cause it, it isn't easy for us, for the five of us plus uh uh our superintendent to say, you know, this is a great district to be in, because of believe in that.
Okay.
But we have to make that case to those people who will have to vote and would like to have a reason to vote that way. And I agree with you guys that uh it's not the lack of willingness on the part of the public to vote for the schools, because we have seen that whenever we needed uh their help. Uh in, in uh many instances, they were there, they just wanted to uh hear the right story, but it's, the onus is on us to tell that uh right story. So, and we have a, we have like till June, mid-June, um from today till mid-June, we have to.
Uh-huh.
What was the uh reaction when you, you sent the budget up last week? And, and what reaction did you get from the powers to be?
Um I resent the budget um today with uh all funds, the first budget that we sent was LEA only. Uh so we got a request uh for the all. Uh, so we got a request uh, for the all funds, so we sent that. Um, a couple of questions actually came out of that, um, that we'll be working on tomorrow. Um, but but honestly, um, I think it's this is probably the good, a good time to ask, um. I don't have a lot of conversation with finance or with the select board and so I did reach out to Chris and trying to organize another joint meeting. So that we can sit around the table and answer the questions, uh, cause I do know that there was um, some discussion that happened. On April third after we presented, um, and those are the kinds of questions I think that we could have answered uh, publicly. So that um, our narrative uh, does get told, uh, because we do have answers to to much of tho- many of those questions. Um, and certainly what we don't, I would like to be able to come back to the table and and share uh, some more information, so. May sixteenth um, is a select board meeting, uh, that Chris uh, is hopeful that uh, we may be able to attend. Or May tenth, um, which would be a special meeting, um, so we can look at calendars and figure out uh, which would be best for us to to attend.
I think that's very important, cause I did hear some feedback on that April third, so I did catch the meeting of it and.
Mm-hmm.
There's a perfect example where, um, sort of what I said half an hour ago that. In my time in the school system or anyone, you realize that you're in the town, one person or a few cannot do it.
Right.
There's a perfect example where there's not that, there's just the sniping at it rather than, hey, the school does need, I'm just giving an example. Hey, they really do, I I understand what they have, what they wanna keep. And god, they really do need, I can see they really need another, I'm throwing four hundred thousand dollars. They really do need that, and then rather than it's like us, the six of us are supposed to solve this problem by fighting for the money. That's not the way it should be, the people live in this town, it's gonna be a unifying thing rather than, you know, it's like if there was no money asked for. They'd be happy, they wouldn't care what we had or didn't have, but when it's a big amount of money, it's just like, oh no, can't do that, what are you going to do? Not you, what are we going to do, it goes back to what Deanne said, this is a town, what are we gonna do?
Right.
Right. We're we're not on the board of a large corporation here trying to run a corporation.
Jennifer saying that we, you, cause I hear they're trying to look at their, they, they, the powers to be try to meet to make sure that they. They put this money that is the free cash, the free cash, my understanding, I'm not gonna count, is. Um, all the taxes that we have paid, including the excise taxes, everything. And there's no way that do the taxes match up to meet the budgets in the past year, it's always gonna be more. So let's put it all away and it goes back to, why, we don't need override, you've already paid these taxes, let's give it back.
Mm-hmm.
Such as thirty thousand dollars on the underwrite for the crash coming up.
Exactly.
Okay, there's, there's, we have the money and what irritates me is that it gets put away with no plan. There's no strategic plan for the town, well, we need that because we need that for this building in four years, what, there, there's no plan. So what do we need to put it away for, when it needs to be used now to keep the school system at the level it is because. We've done an awful lot with little, yes, things do go up, you know, maybe we should ask, you know, why do we have to pay to heat and light the buildings? Nobody else does in their budget, you know, maybe that's just the lo- way it is, but. Put that on there, that's why it's in our budget, because we have to heat these buildings, even other town, that isn't the way, police budget doesn't put that in there, they don't put that in their budget. Library doesn't put it in their budget, it's in the town, look at this town budget, maybe that's the law the way it is, but these are factors that need to be put out there.
Mm-hmm.
And realize what we have, what we do have, we're not asking, there's not a lot of people around here looking for something to do every day. You know, you know, wait for the kids to come in off the street and deal with it, no, they're, they're busy all the time, working, doing something and this is why it's needed.
Right.
Those are the kind of, that's why I get irritated with a lot of snipes were on that meeting, it's like, what?
It's demeaning and belittling.
You, we've got a committee, come here and ask, that's been since April third and now it's May first and you haven't heard, I haven't heard anybody, pick the phone up. Yeah, enlighten me about some, I have a few questions.
Mm-hmm.
That irritates you, that doesn't come your way, it's like, it's really not fair, it's just not fair, it's not fair to the staff, it's not fair to the kids who go to school here.
And the only reason we heard about it was because we heard about it from people in town. Right, I mean, we all left that meeting, right, and none of this was discussed until we left the meeting.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
To me, it's, I I I'm I'm being observant, it's almost like a violation of the open meeting law.
I agree.
Did you have that stuff on your agenda to talk about this and just, and now not even have the right people there?
I agree.
I mean, we're not trying to solve the town issues here, it might irritate, we're not gonna tell them how to run the town, but yet, we were being told how to. I've had enough with those, go this and that, what, what are you talking about?
Right.
No conversation, it's just really talking from ignorance and that's not fair.
What I look at too is, you know, here we are as adults, I think, as role models for the students. To have open and honest discussions and solve our problems collaboratively and that's what we ask our students to do. And so, you know, I would like to be members of the boards that sit down and put the issues out on the table. And come to some sort of understanding of the issue and then the solution. Um, because to your point, you know, the finger pointing and the, that doesn't get us anywhere, it hasn't gotten us anywhere. Um, and I don't wanna be um, part of the, you know, well, you know, we're gonna compare to the police and the fire and that. Because we are a town and we are a small town, um, and the benefits of being a small town, I think outweigh. The negatives and our ability to work together to solve that is a real um, beacon for our children to see. That we are committed to them and their futures and how we solve this problem together. Uh, that has been now historic, as you said, four years where we're at the same, we're at basically the same place.
One thing that came out of that meeting for me, watch watching that meeting. It really did help me understand wh- where the ignorance is and so, and I'm not saying that in a negative way, but. Something that came out, you know, was they want a better school and I think that it's really important for people to understand. Well, of course, we want a better school, but that, that's not what we're asking for, what we're asking for is. The money to run the school and to keep it as good as it is. And we can work on efficiencies and we can work on how we deliver those goods, but. It's not about, uh, we're not asking for seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to make it better, we're asking for seven hundred and fifty-six dollar, thousand dollars to run it.
To keep the service, to keep the service as it is.
To keep the doors open. Right.
Yeah, we're not buying new computers, we're not buying carpeting, we're not buying even ceiling tiles.
Right. And and that was one of the things that were said, is you know, having a pretty school, well, we're not ask, we're not, we're not prettying up the school.
Right.
We're, this is, none of this is, you know, we're not asking for extra money for maintenance costs. It, this is not about beautifying anything, it's about making sure that we are not hurting children. It is making sure that we are educating to the best of our ability with the little bit that we have to educate with and I. It's really important to me to make sure that people understand that, cause when people hear those kinds of statements. Um, what that means to me is that there's a bigger picture that people really don't understand what we're trying to do here. And I think we have to be very clear about what it is that money stands for, it's it's not about asking for extra things.
Right.
So, considering the dates that you threw out, either the sixteenth um, would be attending another select board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I think my preference would be a special meeting. Where we're all on on an equal footing and it's and it's just.
Not at somebody else's meeting.
And it's just an all committees meeting so we can have some open dialogue as opposed to. Being on somebody else's agenda and having thirty minutes because they have five other items on their agenda.
Only the best to do.
Honestly, at this point, uh, if if there are questions, if there is an interest to understand what we're trying to talk about. Um, I would expect those questions to come to us, cause we are going to say, hey, do you have any questions? No one even is prepared and this whole thing, that day for instance, we did not even know that there was a segment after us to talk about the schools. We come here and somebody says, did you hear what happened after you left, well, I don't know what happened because I had another meeting and that was scheduled that way. We had the impression that the last meeting was gonna be a joint meeting and I don't get upset there often, but you know, that was really upsetting that we did not know what was gonna happen, so. My suggestion would be similar to that, if anyone would like to talk to us at this point. We're gonna make every effort to inform everyone, we're gonna put it out there and I still have no problem going and just, you know, sharing something. But if we're gonna share something, there has to be some questions, we can't just go there and sit there and just tell our narrative over and over just because nobody's asking the questions. Or better yet, we would love to have those individuals at least once a year here with us. Uh, so if they have any questions, uh, given that, you know, we have the largest size of budget, we are having these conversations over and over. It would be great to have them here or wherever they would like to meet, probably we have more space here. Uh, and and have a conversation as Deanne said specifically on school related issues. I would not want to be part of an agenda for half an hour because it doesn't even, I mean, look at this conversation, it was supposed to be a brief conversation. We're basically, you know, at the eight thirty mark, uh, it's it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen that way. Uh, so, so, and and I, and to be very honest. A lot of things are questioned and again, I just, you know, I try to take it in stride and you know, it's okay, fine, you know, there may be some misunderstanding and all that. But some of the things that are being said, whether intentionally or unintentionally, that goes to the integrity of the individuals on this committee. Let alone the integrity of everything else that is related to the school district. I mean, wha- wha- what are we doing with the money, what are they doing with the money, how come they don't have this, how come they don't have that? How come the uh, you know, uh, salaries are not, are not less, just, you know, cut the salaries, cut positions, cut services, cut sports, cut this, cut that, well, then there is no school. And it doesn't work that way. And the other thing is, you know, just as we're having these conversations, put aside all that, those questions that, you know, that don't directly come to us. That are being asked everywhere that just lead to rumors, let, uh, put aside all the uh, conversation around, you know, whether the school committee is doing something. On the side that we're not seeing and all that, okay, and then we start having these conversations or our visualization. It's not a conversation that anybody outside this body can start. We have to have that and we're, we always said we're open to having any conversation around any topic. But nobody's coming to us, people wanna just regionalize the entire district on their own somewhere else and it doesn't work that way. So we have to have these conversations to communicate, not to basically score on each other, we stopped doing that. We don't, we know our main purpose is to be able to talk directly to whoever whoever would like to listen to us and explain to them why we are doing what we're doing. We're bringing, you know, we're going to all these places, we're spending countless hours trying to put things together to show folks that, you know. If this happens, we're gonna be able to bring some more funding, we're just trying to find some efficiencies elsewhere, having two hour conversation around the forty thousand dollar position. That will help the district and you know, that that's been uh, waiting there for for years. But then again, you know, uh, it's easy to have broad conversations in front of any camera to say, hey, you know what, what are these guys doing, what are they hiding? Well, if there is anything that we're hiding, I would like to go line by line and show, explain what it is.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there is really, even when it comes to salaries, there is no secret, go to any annual report, open the annual report, add up those numbers and tell us.
Mm-hmm.
What else, if you wanna see how much those salaries are increasing every year, don't just, you know, you don't have to worry about it, go Google it. Or every contract from every school district in the state is uh, s- yeah, in the uh, repository.
Mm-hmm.
Employee contracts repository, you can find it, so you don't really have to, you know, just you don't really have to uh, create narratives. And if there are opportunities for us that we don't see, again, we're we're open and we said that years ago, just tell us. The question that we're getting is, how are you planning on increasing revenue or generating revenue, well, this is not a retail shop, though we can generate revenue. To be able to generate revenue, we have to have more students, to be able to have more students, we have to spend, invest in the school district.
Well, we have to, we have to have a stable, we have to have a stable viable district for students.
That's the way we generate revenue. Yes.
For families to want to bring their students to our district, knowing that there aren't gonna be ten teacher positions cut the following year.
Right.
Or it looks wonderful this year, but what about next year, it's it's too unstable, we need stability.
Exactly. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if we're gonna have technical conversations, I'm all for it as well, I can, you know, whether whether I know it, I may be able to answer and we're all the same. Or we do our homework and we come back for it, but you know, if someone's gonna say, hey, you know, by the way, we found out that CPI was this. And we're gonna hit everything against some constant inflation rate and that's the way we're gonna uh, determine that the school budget. Should be twenty-eight percent less than what it is, the state will laugh at us because there is a reason. We're saying that the foundation budget is now uh, seen as a deficient budget.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not reflecting what the cost of education is by the amount of a billion to two billion dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And then we're hearing that maybe we're spending too much, it should be twenty-eight percent less, when the state in this bad budget, foundation budget. Is giving us, uh, what was it, not uh, eight plus million dollars required spending.
Mm-hmm.
It says if you, if you need to educate your students, this is the minimum you have to spend and by the way, feel free to spend more than that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And every year we're having the same conversation. And every year, people who hear the conversation, whether at the town meeting or at these meetings or watching these things, they're saying, you know what, these guys don't have their acts together. I'm not gonna keep my uh, students here in the district, they leave and then following year, we have less money. And same conversation, same conversation, there there's no end to it, we have to say, we all have to, I I I think that is the primary message. And it's been the primary message that this is a town matter, one, number two, we'll all, we'll all have to work on it together. There is no score, we're not trying to do anything, we're not gonna be here forever, we're not attached to these seats, we're, you know, we're basically doing, you know, sometimes it hurts, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We're doing this because we care about education, about the students, about this district.
And about our town.
About, that's exactly what it is.
That's it, yeah.
I mean, look at this town, this town. Was one of the uh, leading towns that spent a lot of money on education decades and decades ago. It's not like they, this was the most affluent town uh, in the region ever. But they said, you know what, if we really want to see this town grow and the uh, students prosper, the kids learn. And the public come together uh, as a community somewhere, we need to invest in the school district. Some of those folks are still alive, we can bring them and just ask them why they invested in the school district.
Yeah.
It, I mean, there's no secret around that. Now we're caught up in this political cycle where everybody is just creating some stories and trying to find some reason why we should not invest in the schools. And we are trying to be as reasonable as possible. That we do understand there is no end to it if we're gonna be spending a billion dollar deficit out of some uh, bank account year after year. But unless we just say, you know what, if we do these things, we pull these levers, we're gonna see this positive impact. And in a couple of years, we're expecting these things to happen, give us some opportunity to show that we're gonna be able to improve the school district. At least there has to be some dialogue around that and I don't see any dialogue around it at all.
And I'm just, while you were speaking, thought of at the meet the candidates, so and because this all impacts the town, it's all pertinent. The only plan forward for Granby to grow is through residential building, okay, we don't have the infrastructure for any businesses. So, uh, the only plan that Granby has right now, according to planning board and select board, is to build houses. You will never build houses in this town without a solid school district, will never happen. So if this is the plan for our town to succeed, if this is the plan for Granby to become more stable. And you know, have more things to offer the residents, this is it, is this is what we have to offer, we have. Farmland, a beautiful town, a beautiful community, great people and really great schools. And the minute we lose those schools, those great people are out of here and all of our property value will plummet. This isn't just about paying teachers to come to work every day, this really is our community.
Right.
And the voters of Granby need to understand that and then make that voice heard if they agree with that statement, that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah.
Ridiculous.
So, given that uh, our short meeting is now not so short, any other.
Are you frustrating, sorry?
Um, items that we need to hit or any other um, research investigation that we can do until next time, okay?
I have six, so that's good.
You said six?
You have what?
I have six things to.
Okay.
Are you, are you gonna ask for a s- a a specific meeting?
Mm-hmm.
On the tenth.
No, on the tenth maybe, okay.
On the tenth.
And that's a Wednesday?
It is.
Uh, yes, it is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
You can't do Wednesday.
No, I can do Wednesday, that's, that's why I I really, I mean, I can make the other one work too, but. But um more importantly, like I said, I think it needs to be an all committees meeting.
Yeah. And the other thing is, you know, that again, with. Sometimes we all get tense and all that, but when I have individual conversations with any of uh those folks who are on uh different committees. You can have a, you can have a good conversation. You can at least get into a decent conversation where everybody speaks their mind, ask questions.
Mm-hmm.
Cause we don't know everything either, just we ask questions, how these things are done. Uh to his credit with uh Chris as well, if you know, there are questions around uh uh town ledger, how certain things are spent, the in-kind expenses, this and that. You know, we 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 are able to get the answers, I don't know why we can't just have that type of conversation when we get together. And I think the town should ask us to have that conversation.
I'm surprised that more townspeople don't demand that of of our committees, all the all.
I think they're starting to, that is, that is one of the questions that I was asked during the meet the meet the candidates.
All committees.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, we we advocate and have been advocating for more communication since I've been on this committee.
Any other?
I don't see any other way to 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 progress.
No.
Quite frankly.
No, no, I mean, just, you know, it it. Again, we're all in uh separately getting worked up, doesn't help the situation, we have to work together, not get worked up, that's.
True. We're all on the same team and it sounds cliche, but it's true.
Mm-hmm.
We operate as if we're opponents.
Yeah.
It's it's mind boggling to me.
And again, there, whatever we are able to discuss right now because of, because this is what we know. Um. Will evolve and change as we get into summer months because we're gonna know more about what our strategic direction can be. And will be. And there are, there are a lot of different ways that we can approach this, but we have, we have to get that input, we have to get that collaboration and again, that's true, it's for all of us, not just. Not just uh for one entity in town. Um I actually, as I was looking through this folder, I just saw the um. This uh two thousand seventeen public policy priorities. I'll just go through it one more time to see if it's, you know, too heavy of reading than, I think there's an electronic version of it, I'll post it on the the our Facebook page. So anybody who would like to read, they can see the common priorities across the state. Okay, so with that. Um we we have the calendar in our folder.
Uh yes, and I have not had an opportunity to meet with uh the uh leadership team uh to review it, so I would like to put that on the fifteenth for vote.
So. So I'm gonna ask a question.
Mm-hmm.
What I understood from that conversation was that, for whatever reason, early on, it didn't come up and the dates that we had scheduled for West Street and East Meadow open houses?
Yes.
Or teacher parent, or 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 what, parent teacher, parent teacher conferences.
Parent teacher conferences.
They were no longer convenient or uh feasible or whatever it was, right? We're trying to change the dates.
Mm-hmm.
To make sure that they're at a point where there is a lot more interaction early on that can be discussed during those meetings.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Does it really need our approval? Or can we just say, you know, you have that conversation, because we already uh threw out their suggestions. Are we, I I'm I'm asking because I don't know, is this something that we have to legally approve or is this something we can say, you know, our superintendent can have that conversation? Based on those dates that we threw out there and if it's it it's good, it's good, we doesn't have to, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna delay anything if that's causing some planning issues.
But if you're changing the calendar, the school committee has to vote on it.
Well, the calendar, we've already voted on that, we're just basically changing.
No, I know, but if you're.
With that one change, yeah, we're expected.
What, you're still, but if you're changing the, something about the calendar.
So you're saying it should come back to us, alright, so.
Yeah, it has to be voted on.
Yeah. Cause this is, I think, the third meeting, uh at least, where, you know, we have it on the agenda and it's.
And we talked about it twice, yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Cause we had the conversation, then it was on the last one and then it's on the this one and, okay, so let's just.
Well, we usually get involved in setting the starting date of the school.
Yes, that's that's understandable.
What happened between, that sort of, and then we assumed that, you know, the staff was all in this together, here's the dates, because. You have bus issues where you you don't wanna have, the idea was you put the pa- ha- parentage conferences for the district, K through twelve, that's what you've done the last couple of years, I know Isabelleina started that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, so now that means you're for the bus rather than bus coming and all these things, and then parents, so now they wanna mix it up a bit, you know, then you get into that. You know, those October Novembers are always difficult because there's always some days, there's Columbus Day and there's, you know, uh Veterans Day and Thanksgiving and.
Mm-hmm.
And then it cuts the education, so it's really a tough thing, so we just assume everyone was involved in it, here's the dates, go with it, people, I mean, you knew about it, you know? That should have been put on the table before it even got to here, you know?
Right.
I mean, think about what you're doing and it, weren't these similar to what was done this past year?
It was, and I and I think what happened was is that we went through the same process and then um.
So.
Once it got out to the elementary school, um that's when we got some feedback that, you know, hey, have you considered? And so that's when I brought it forward and said, would the committee consider even, you know, those school conference dates, uh before I even move forward? So.
Yeah. Similar to Jim, my understanding was that we we agree, we vote on the calendar because there is a contractual uh part of it. Where, you know, at the beginning of the year, there's uh.
Mm-hmm. You have your hundred and eighty.
Professional days before and after the start or whatever it might be, then, you know, so many days uh we have to have in the uh school year.
Mm-hmm.
Then there are so many uh professional days and parent teacher conferences, we just look at that and then we say, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh but it, you know, uh I agree, then next time, if we can have it, we can.
Well, yeah, and to your point, I think what we ex- what we assume and what we expect is that when the calendar comes to us, it's already been discussed and.
It's completely, yep. And that was my, you know, shame on me perhaps, I, you know, but in trying to be flexible and and hear from staff. Um whether or not there was a consideration for that time. Um you know, my assumption was that the process we used, vetting it through the leadership team, sharing it with staff. Uh through the unit, getting feedback and then coming back for a vote, that that was.
Enough.
Enough. And and then I got some feedback and trying to be responsive to the feedback, um and trying to get some history, um so.
And and I think our feedback going back to them is make sure the feedback.
Came in time, yeah, got it.
Yes.
It's the feedback and the feedback's asked for.
Exactly. Make sure that, you know, the key players.
If you miss the meeting, tough luck.
Exactly, well, there is a little bit of that.
Well, there is.
Got the opportunity, but you blew it, so here's what it is.
Yeah. Yep.
On his way out, he's getting.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm never going through that.
You know, you know what it is, yeah.
Here's the dates and you have discussion and you just try to cement it and it's a whole year away or something, but.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, if you're gonna sleep on it, think about it, well, I mean, couldn't we all do that?
Yeah.
We do it every day, pretty soon, everything is changed, changed, changed.
Yes. At some point, you have to live with it.
Yeah, this is it, gotta make the best of it.
Yeah.
You know, anytime you do, it's like, you know, you don't expect a hundred, a hundred percent of the people to like it, but this is what it is, make the best of it.
Point taken.
And all it is, is a conference.
I think we drilled that, got it, to to death.
If I'm a parent coming in, just tell me how my kid is doing, what can I do to help him or to be better, or what do you have to improve upon, you know? You don't have to throw, I never believe, you don't even throw test scores in front of him and so on, I think, it's just, how's my kid doing, what can I do to help, what can we do to make him or do better? You know, or to challenge him more or something, you know, I don't need test scores or anything else, I need the day-to-day interaction that I see with that kid, that's what I wanna know. But that's my theory.
No, that's a good point, that's a good point.
Go, Jim.
Um. For policy, do we have anything we approve D?
We have subcommittee coming up. In. May eleventh.
I think we completed section D, didn't we? So we were, we were supposed to bring it to the full committee for a reading.
We were supposed to do. I did not.
So if we can do that, hmm?
Tonight? Tonight?
Well, it was, it's basically puts, it is put in our folder for a first reading, we discuss, then goes for a second reading and then we approve it.
So.
Uh after discussion.
So we'll do that next meeting?
But we already completed section D, it's all done, all all revised and.
I did not know, did you know that?
No, it's not in there, I didn't know it is.
No, no, that is not in the poll, that's not in the.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Nope.
Thank you. I was gonna say, I messed with that.
So I have to get that from David.
You said to Deanne, right, just, she wants to read it.
Oh, just Deanne.
Okay, so if we can do it for next time, that would be great.
Yeah.
Um. You do have a report, right?
I do.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So that's in your folder, in a PDF now.
Yeah, I like the pictures a lot.
Aren't they fun? Uh so thank you to all of our elementary school students for one hundred percent participation on ELA MCAS. And I do believe also, if you can give me a second, uh I believe Ally. Um. Ally, uh the assistant principal at the high school, a hundred percent of math attendance uh on MCAS. And also that the online environment was very successful for students, so thank you for David, to David, uh he was able to secure. Uh another set of donated computers to build a second lab for our online testing, um and that was very successful. Uh congratulations to our grade four students for completing their simple machines, uh which were on display at the East Meadow Open House. Thank you to the Granby PTO uh for their continued support of the grade level field trips um and teacher appreciation week this week. Uh I have seen many, many parents coming in and out of the schools, um donating their time. Uh and various goodies uh to teachers, so thank you for that. Um thank you also to the elementary student students who participated in in Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser uh last week, that was very successful. And then uh we had a wonderful prom as our student rep shared with us uh this past weekend, Candyland was a sweet success. Uh and uh hopefully, you will look at the superintendent's update and uh catch the picture of our teachers. Who dressed up as the Candyland um characters, uh in costume to chaperone the prom, so thank you for them. Um the spring athletic season uh certainly uh was postponed a little bit due to weather, but is now up and running. And uh be sure to check out the webpage for their upcoming games. And we also have our grade six to seven transition night on May eleventh coming up, so please join us for that. And then uh so you can come and learn all of the great things happening at Granby Junior Senior High School. And that's all I have.
Um since we mentioned the success of uh our test and we mentioned David. Again, just uh to make sure that everybody understands uh if if they watch it. We have state level standard tests happening and they do require uh computers to be able to uh complete it. By all of our students. There are a couple of ways that can be done if we're gonna use the computers, I'm not even sure if they allow the exception of doing it on paper anymore, they did once, but I think it all switched to computers. First of all, the computers have to be in working order, uh they have to be uh at certain specifications, but on top of that. You can do two things, one is you can be online and you can uh fill out the form on the computer and it automatically gets uh received somewhere. Or if you don't have that ability, which we did not until recently, uh unless uh we were able to make some changes uh lately. You have to be able to store that information or you have to cash enough basically to be able to uh allow the students to take that test on their computers. Otherwise, it crashes, which it did the very first time we tried to do park here, uh the the new uh test, uh it 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 just crashed.
Mm-hmm.
So students basically had to stop and they had to go and do, take the test in different ways. And that is one of the reasons, this is a mandate.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't come with money.
Mm-hmm.
It basically, somebody says, here, we expect you to do this now and you figure it out. Um. We even talked about uh a couple of years ago about getting some grants for it. To be able to get some grants, you have to be a certain size, you have to, you have to employ so many people in your tech department to be able to uh receive that grant. And we were happy for one day, the next day, we found out that we were not even eligible for it. So this, these are the types of stories that we need to share over and over again. That's why we keep on discussing this forty thousand dollar data analyst position, because if one individual will be setting up the computers, making sure that they don't crash. Especially at the very crucial moment when the students are taking the test. Go and get some uh hardware, set up the computers and run the infrastructure, or somebody else has to do the data entry somewhere. Otherwise, there are not enough hours in the day for a school district to do whatever it needs to do uh using computers.
Mm-hmm.
Even then, we're just having the conversation to see whether or not we can find some other ways to do certain things. But this was a good example of that and thank you, David, for uh for, you know, helping uh making this a success again. I don't think, we don't have anything from the collaborative. Um we'll we'll have our uh elections in a couple of weeks or in a couple of meetings anyway, so. Um we'll talk about it then. Uh building committee, we did not meet since our last meet, uh last meeting anyway. Policy committee, we just discussed, is there anything else that anybody wanted to share?
The the question on the building committee, even though I'll be off the school committee, who do I talk to about continuing, you know, I still continue to that school gets built, I hope.
Yeah. Um I I think, I think you are part of the committee now. Uh I don't, I don't think, I don't think at this late stage, we're gonna change uh the school committee.
I have. Okay.
Yeah, cause the last.
The building committee.
Three years, you were there as a member of the school committee and we only have a short time left and this is.
I mean, I'm, but I wanna continue on that.
Yeah, that's my understanding of it, uh but we can double check to see just uh.
Okay. You know when the next meeting is, if I didn't make the last one, any of you know?
Yes.
Can I write that down on my social calendar?
Um.
See, we said we'd find a way to keep him intact.
Actually, I lied, I don't have it here.
Yeah, I didn't get any minutes or anything, I don't have minutes would say when it comes, okay, I'll try to, I'll talk to town administrator, see if he knows.
I don't have it. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, he would, he would, he would know.
He would know. Okay, you.
Okay. No, thank you. Uh is there anything else? Okay, Jim, thank you very much.
Jim, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have to.
We hope to see you maybe here uh next time.
So this is, this is your fa- last official meeting, you know?
Do you have comments?
Well, yeah, no, it is uh official meeting that was scheduled, we may have a joint meeting, but you know, uh uh we may not have the opportunity to do this next, next week.
You have a number fifteen? You have a number fifteen, they have a meeting on fifteen?
Hoping that there is a meeting next week, otherwise, there's election the, one day after that.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
So we have a meeting on on Election Day?
N- no, we do?
It's scheduled.
Because Jim probably can't be here and I probably wouldn't be able to be here.
The fifteenth?
May tenth is election day?
Uh.
No, the fifteenth.
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
What's May fifteenth?
Let's just double check.
It's a Monday, the next, it's the next scheduled school committee meeting.
School commi- oh, I see.
Is that on my schedule?
No, no, it may be on the schedule, but are we, are we supposed to have uh meetings on Election Day?
I don't, I don't think you're supposed to.
I don't think you're supposed to either.
Right.
I don't think you're, I don't think you are.
Because uh there's an election, somebody will be uh elected. And the votes will not have been counted by the time we meet and it just creates this, yeah. Unless we change halfway.
Well, the next Monday is Memorial Day. I'm sorry, the twenty second.
It doesn't have to be Monday, um we can just, we can have it any day during the week.
You have the twenty second.
Twenty second?
Twenty second could be.
Twenty second is what?
Monday night.
The following Monday, it's fine with me, alright, twenty second?
Yeah, that's fine. Again, the sixteen sounds good too, I don't mind meeting, oh, you can't meet on Tuesday.
I could show up at seven.
No, you can, you can do Wednesday, right?
I can do a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Wasn't it one of your possible joint meeting dates too?
We said the tenth.
The tenth.
I know, but I thought I had a backup in case.
The sixteenth was a uh select board meeting already.
Alright, tw- twenty second it is then.
Six o'clock start?
Six.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Thanks, Trana.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A. Section twenty one, Part A three, to discuss strategy with regards, with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can we have a. Can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Deanne Payne Rukowski, aye.
Jennifer Curran, aye.
Maureen LaCorte, aye.
Amira Ran, aye.
Your teachers, aye.
Thank you, and have a good night.